Hello?
Good morning, Larry.
Are you there?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
We're volume. Here we go.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Couple of seconds to go.
This is pretty.
(cough)
Right.
And they're all afraid of the German.
Oh, I do. All right, I think we're 10 o'clock. We are. Are you ready? Okay. I'd like to call to order the County of Placer Planning Commission for Thursday, December 9th, 2021. Could we all stand for the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance. To the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. How about Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. DiMattei?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Seveson?
Here.
And Mr. Haughey?
Here. This is the first time we've all been together.
We're all here.
I know. This is great. Welcome, everyone. We are doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing while also encouraging the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment virtually today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join online, click on the link of the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted and may also call using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247. And please enter the webinar ID 96320598223. Please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with your hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, consent item, or timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. At this time, EJ, if you could give your report.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Avaldi here with the Planning Services Division. It is, it's great to have just about all our commissioners here in front of us. Larry, there was inclement weather today. As you know, it's snowed over the past, so although you aren't able to hear, we're here in person, Larry, we're very glad that you're joining us via Zoom. So anyway, just normal business first. I do want to talk about some changes at CEDRA. As you may know, the Agency Director, Steve Pedretti, retired this past week after 40 years of public service. While the county recruits for this position, Jane Christensen, the County Assistant CEO, who you have already got acquainted with through the redistricting process, has been appointed the interim CEDRA Director, so I'd like to welcome her. I don't think she's here today, but welcome her to CEDRA during this time. Planning Division also has a couple of recruitments open for a principal planner and an associate assistant level planner. These are not new positions, but we are backfilling positions vacated by George Rososco when he was promoted to the planning manager and then with Nikki Strigan's recent departure. As you know, Nikki was a valuable member of the planning team the last seven years. She was responsible for bringing forward the county's winery ordinance, the VMT implementation, and the recent redistricting process as well, and many other contributions. I'm not going to hold it against her that she has left for the private sector, but we will certainly miss her and, you know, we wish her much success with her new job. Since our last meeting, the Board of Supervisors have had two meetings to consider the supervisory redistricting maps, and on Tuesday, the Board unanimously voted to tentatively approve the redistricting map alternative known as Hybrid 2.0 Option 1. I've provided you all a copy of that so you know what that map looks like. Final approval is scheduled for the December 14th Board Meeting. With final approval, this map will be submitted to the state and will set legislative district boundaries for the next decade. Let's see, upcoming Planning Commission schedule. As you know, this is our last Planning Commission this year. We had a very busy 2021, as you all know. There were a total of 21 meetings this year, including the Advisory Redistricting Commission Meetings. So for next year, our first meeting is going to be on January 13th with a 10:00 AM start. I saved the best for last. Larry Seveson is not here in person, but I'm sure on Zoom, he could see that he actually is here in the room with us today. So this is for you, Larry. Larry advised us recently that today will be his last day of public service on this Planning Commission. This will, of course, take time to settle in for a lot of us, but I'd like to share a few things about Larry, and then I'll turn it over to the commissioners. And then I know we also have a couple callers on the line that would like to do the same. Larry, when I met you 25 years ago after being hired here at the county, you were already a fixture of the Tahoe community, having served a term on the Board of Supervisors and already 15 years as a Planning Commissioner. Your dedicated public service over the last five decades as a Planning Commissioner representing the Lake Tahoe area is unprecedented in the county. Forty-three years, I believe, sitting as a Commissioner, not to mention all the other public service endeavors that Larry's been involved with. Your influence, Larry, in decision-making on planning efforts from the west side of the county to the shores of Lake Tahoe have contributed significantly in shaping the county that we all live in today. You didn't waste any time either. In fact, your very first Planning Commission meeting on September 7th, 1972, a lot of people in this room weren't even born then, you weighed in and voted to approve the first Placer County Conservation and Recreation Plan. That was a new element in the county's general plan at the time. Since that time, you were involved in the framework of the county's general plan and every update since. You've taken part in just about every community plan, although we may have a couple that even date Larry's. Every specific plan and every conservation that generations will benefit from years to come. Most importantly, Larry, you made significant contributions to the Lake Tahoe community that you represent. You provided steady guidance in its economic growth and prosperity, and your decisions made it a safer place to live and recreate. On behalf of myself, our CEDRA staff, all who are behind me and are watching this meeting today, I want to thank you for your 43 years plus of public service on this Planning Commission meeting, or Planning Commission, your input and support for planning excellence throughout the county, and your intelligible ability to find compromise when conflicts arise, while always being kind and compassionate to the people that you work for. Personally, you've been a true friend over the years for me. I'm thankful for your influence that made me a better professional, a better planner and person. I'm certainly going to miss you, your service on this commission. And with that, you know, we can give a round of applause, or we can wait and get comments from our commissioners and then maybe turn it over to the callers as well.
How about we hear from the commissioners first?
Yeah, I would like to comment about Larry. Excuse me. He's, since I've been on the Commission, which is, I guess, a little over 10 years now, I've worked with Larry on the Commission and always been impressed with his style, dealing with the various issues, and his ability to think things through, his knowledge of the county and the information from the past has brought a lot of value to the Commission. And his leadership, his ability to deal with issues and sometimes, he served as a supervisor at one time, and so he's able to sometimes bring compromise where issues arise, and so that's been very beneficial to the Commission. And so, Larry, I want to sincerely thank you for your service on the Commission.
It's a mutual feeling.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Cannon. Larry, I've always appreciated your pragmatic input and your wealth of knowledge on so many of the issues that impact that particular region, Tahoe area, in Placer County. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and thank you for all your many years of dedication and public service.
Thank you.
I can follow that. As been said, you know, your experience and knowledge is unprecedented, and it will be sorely missed on this commission. You know, that being said, I got a lot of respect for you. I can only hope to listen as you have, to care for others, and really be a servant to the community as you have been. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you. I only got to know Larry for a short period, and I just appreciate what I've learned from you. Thank you.
Thank both of you.
And Larry, as is Dan Woodward, I, like Anthony, I didn't get to know you very well, but certainly over the last year, you've taught me a lot and you've clearly set a high bar. I thought, I appreciate EJ's comments because it helped me understand the true contribution. You know, you really have done an extraordinary thing for this county, so thank you for that.
Larry, I think I first met you in 1974 when I began working for the California TRPA, and I almost feel like I should be on the other side of the dais for all of my career. You have been up here and I've been down there making presentations. And the one thing I found is you are always fair, reasonable, logical in your decision-making, and I appreciated that. And as I came on to the Commission here, those are attributes that I have tried to maintain also. So, thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? And then we'll go to the Zoom calls. Seeing none, so, Sue? All right. I think Supervisor Wagen, you can speak.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I didn't want to put a call in with regards to Larry. I just wanted to talk to you guys about redistricting, so I appreciate the opportunity. (laughing) I say that because Larry used to do that kind of stuff to me all the time, so I'm going to try to get back with him on a couple of points. One is Larry and I have known each other and been good friends for, not all the time he's been on the Commission of the years that he's served, but most of it. We shared a mutual, very close personal friend, Alex Ferrera, who was my predecessor on the boards. And I want the world, the public, to know that Larry and Alex got together and lied to me to talk me into running for the board by talking about how easy it was to do the job and how little time it took. And so I just want to make it be known that I did the same thing to Cindy to try to convince her to run for the board, and it worked. So it's a good tactic amongst those of us in the business. But on a more serious note, Larry, you're the gold standard. There's no way anybody, EJ, you did a great job of covering a lot of Larry's career, but if you're in this business and you fight the wars and you get involved in the details of each battle, Larry brought to the table just an amazing array of skill sets and relationships and ideas, always seeking a solution, doing everything he could, even when people were not that friendly to him or the rest of us. But it is a long story about how the residents of Placer County, particularly up on the east side, have benefited. I could do two or three hours just on the Tahoe Conservancy itself. But with that, the greatest thing for me, Larry, is the friendship that we've shared and affection that I have for you is something that I couldn't explain. So I'm going to be retiring in an hour or in a year, maybe an hour, but in a year, and hopefully then we'll be able to get back up to Fish Camp and spend some time up there and have a couple of glasses of bourbon and do all the other kinds of things that we enjoy doing and just spending more quality time together. But on behalf of citizens of Placer County, you cannot be thanked enough. You are a gold standard and a great mentor to me, and I look back with huge pride on all the things we were able to do together, but you stand out alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Cindy, I think.
Yes.
Yep. You're on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to echo everything that Robert said, most of what Robert said. I don't want to talk about redistricting again, so, you know, I don't want to echo that. But, you know, Larry, everything that Robert said and EJ brought up and the commissioners brought up, not only on the Planning Commission, but in your role at the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, representing Placer County, and I know near and dear to your heart, the California Tahoe Conservancy Board, I am so honored to follow in your footsteps in these various roles I've done. Because of your mentorship, your leadership, and you have an ability I haven't yet quite found, which is despite all the decisions you made, there is no one I know, and I know a lot of people, who dislike Larry Seveson. Everybody respects what you've contributed and your viewpoint and how you approach the job on some really challenging, very divisive issues, and you brought common sense and calm demeanor and leadership beyond, beyond reproach. It is truly an amazing legacy to follow in just a little bit of your footsteps in some of the roles I now find myself in. And your legacy for our county, throughout our entire county, and your legacy especially to the east slope areas will never, ever be matched. So Larry, again, I feel like we've continued to say these things, but as with the utmost gratitude and appreciation for you as an individual and as a leader in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy and Robert. It's very sweet.
Other comments, Sue?
What'd you say?
Oh, we were just checking to see if anyone was else on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So with that, I think a round of applause for your service to the county is deserved.[1469.16][1469.16](applause)
You're all very sweet. Thank you a million times. Again, can't be appreciated.
Is Larry, I was going to say, I think that applause was for Patsy, who, you know, there's always a strong woman behind a good man, and so maybe another applause for Larry
Keep up the good work.
I would say, Chairman Wagen, it's probably time because of, EJ brought up the redistricting. If you want to make comments on redistricting, I'd say now's the time.
Do I want to make comments?
Well, you said that's why you were here.
No, I was, that was a complete joke.
Oh, that was a joke, sorry, okay.[1528.82][1528.82](laughing)
But I will say, I just, you know, we completed a long and arduous process, and it was challenging, and I want to thank personally the commissioners for the time and effort and energy that they put into it. I think we ended up in a solid place.
Thank you very much. All right, I will now open public comment on any matters not on the Commission's agenda. And it looks like, Wayne, you're going to be first.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Haughey, Commissioners. EJ mentioned that you have the map that was adopted on Tuesday in front of you. I think this process, to say it's been challenging is probably an understatement. We've been on a marathon for basically two months to try to compress into that time to come out with something that really reflected Placer County and the interests of Placer County. And I want to thank the Commission for going through this and for forwarding the public map onto the Board for consideration. I want to particularly thank Commissioners Haughey and Hersog for speaking up during that process and encouraging the public map that was put together. The, there was four of us that were really working on it, but there were hundreds of people that weighed in on it for the Board, and I want to thank everybody. The public involvement made the difference in this. And so I want to thank the Board for listening to the public and for supporting the public-generated map. I believe that it is a real milestone for this county, and it was certainly not anticipated. I think we all were a little bit stunned initially when they did a reversal from Map A and went to the public map. But I think it was a good outcome. I was delighted that they did a unanimous vote for the public map. And so again, I wanted to come and thank each of you for the work that you did during the time that it was for you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments in the audience? Any comments on Zoom? Nope? With that, then I'm going to close the public comment for items not on the agenda and move to the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who would like to remove consent items from the agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who would like to remove consent items from the agenda? Or Zoom? All right, seeing none, then I'll look for a motion from the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Hersog, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei.
With the exception that I'll abstain for a minute due to my last minute business-related matter.
Okay.
Plus my absence. My apologies.
Thank you. Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Likewise, I abstain on October 28th, 4 November, and 10 November's minutes, and then would vote yes on 18 November.
Let's see, Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving into our first-time item, the Winding Creek Estates Conditional Use Permit Modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Patrick Dobbs, Senior Planner, will be presenting the item.
Good morning, Chairman Haughey and Commissioners, Patrick Dobbs, Planning Services Division. The, this item is the Proposed Winding Creek Estates Conditional Use Permit Modification. Winding Creek subdivision is located on the west side of Cook Riola Road, immediately north of Dry Creek and west of the Creekview Ranch Middle School in the north of Dry Creek and west of the Creekview Ranch Middle School in the Dry Creek West Placer Community near Roseville. There are two zone districts designated on this approximately 24 and a half acre property. The northern buildable portion of the site is zoned, single-family residential combining agriculture, combining minimum building size of 40,000 square feet, combining planned residential development of one unit per acre. And the southern portion of the site is zoned open space, combining planned residential development of one unit per acre. The subdivision was originally approved in 2005 as an 11-lot planned development. In 2008, the project was granted a two-year extension of time from the county, and subsequently in 2010, the project was granted seven years of automatic extensions from the state. In 2017, your planning commissioner approved a modification to the project to increase the number of lots to a 19-lot planned development. Following submittal of improvement plans, the applicant inadvertently let the permit expire in 2019. They immediately reapplied, and your planning commission reapproved the project. Today, the backbone infrastructure is nearly complete. Model home permits have been issued on three of the lots and are under construction. This exhibit shows the approved tentative subdivision map. There are red stars on lots number two through 13 and lot number 16, because these are the subject of the proposed modification that's before you today. The proposal is to increase the allowable lot coverage on these 13 identified lots. The increased coverage proposed is to accommodate today's home buyers' preferences for single-story homes and will provide options for future buyers for outdoor cover patios and larger garages. Neighbors adjacent to the project area have indicated they would prefer single-story homes, and so this minor increase in lot coverage requested would accommodate these modifications and neighbor preferences. I should, I meant to mention that the modification results in a cumulative addition of 4,973 square feet, which is about 6% of the total approved subdivision lot coverage. These are some examples of the single-story residential designs that are similar in layout and finish quality to nearby Morgan Ranch project, which is also owned by the same developer, and are consistent with the regional design trends of other established nearby communities such as Willow Creek, Riola Greens, Doyle Ranch, and Morgan Creek. So the Winding Creek subdivision is compatible with surrounding land uses. Homes will use high-quality building materials and designs that are consistent with nearby subdivisions and developed rural residential properties. There is attractive landscaping and adequate buffering from surrounding land uses. Coverage contributes to increased stormwater runoff and intensity, and with the proposed modification, the total maximum lot coverage for Winding Creek would be 85,408 square feet. Drainage facilities were designed and constructed with an assumed coverage of 5,000 square feet per lot, or 95,000 square feet of cumulative coverage for the subdivision. Therefore, the subdivision drainage facilities are adequately sized for this increased runoff associated with the coverage modification. Further, the project has been designed to conform with the West Placer Stormwater Quality Management Manual. This calls for low-impact development, or LID, where drainage considerations are integrated into the site and building designs. The third bullet, the planned development building coverage consistency. The intent of the planned residential development is to encourage innovative residential development that is compatible with surrounding land uses and provides design flexibility for particular characteristics of the site. The maximum building coverage for planned developments is governed by the base zone district and the PD intensity factor. And so the proposed modification would exceed the coverage allowance in the PD ordinance, but would remain below the 40% allowed coverage for the single-family residential base zone district. So as proposed, no lots within Winding Creek would exceed 35% coverage. This is consistent with the purpose and intent of the planned developments and is compatible with other surrounding planned developments such as Morgan Creek and Morgan Ranch that are also located within the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan. The final bullet, the proposed additional lot coverage would result in slightly larger building footprints on those subject 13 lots. Currently, only lots one through three are limited to single-story. The other 16 lots in the subdivision could, would allow two-story homes. So if the modification is approved, all of the homes in the subdivision would be single-story, which is limited to 25 feet in height. So this modification would have the benefit of reducing the overall bulk and mass and visual impact of these future homes when viewed from surrounding properties and public We did receive one letter from George Brown. He's a neighbor to the west of the project. In that letter, he discusses fencing and paving of an easement. And those comments are kind of more historical and aren't really germane to the proposal as it relates to the lot coverage modification. And to the extent that the county has looked into it, you know, these issues, we're not able to validate Mr. Brown's comments. And so the Development Review Committee recommends that the planning commission find that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and rat to the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is included in Attachment D, is adequate to satisfy the requirements of SEQA and determine that the changes to lot coverage associated with the CUP modification do not warrant additional environmental analysis. And finally, to approve the conditional use permit modification for the planned residential development to allow additional site or lot coverage on lots two through 13 and 16, as supported by the findings in the staff report, subject to the modified conditions of approval in Attachment C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll answer your questions. Thank you, Patrick. Questions from the commission?
Thanks for that, I appreciate it. On Attachment A, the green line that goes through there, is that the original Dry Creek As I see previous, on the previous page, it has a 100-year flood, and then the new 100-year flood is obviously, there's no water.
I bear with me just one moment as I get it up here. I think that may be the zoning delineation.
Is that what the green lines are? There's no legend on here, so I didn't know.
All right. So that green line is actually the zoning delineation, but it is representative of the, you know, sensitive area of the parcel and the buildable and high-capability area of the parcel. So the actual floodplain delineation, I think that's what you're asking about?
Yeah, correct.
I mean, that's shown in the actual staff report on page 10 of 12. And that is a factor, and as, you know, was discussed in the staff report. When the project was originally approved, the flood, the 100-year floodplain was shown larger than it currently is today. That change occurred, let's see, was it, I think about, well, 2017, 2018. So there were no changes to base flood elevations, but there was a change in the technology used to evaluate the topography, and it really went to this LiDAR technology and light detection from, and so that actually reduced the 100-year floodplain area, particularly in the western portion of the project area.
So in Figure 4, is that red allotted area from Attachment A, does that go into that flood zone area? Like, if I was to draw that red line on here, does that go into the previous 100-year? I'm just trying to get my bearings.
I think that, you're referencing the green line or whatever on Attachment A?
On Attachment A, where it has the red projected site, and then there's the green linear lines that...
Right.
So if I was to take that red subdivision and stick it on Figure 4, does that southern section, southern area of that development lie in that flood zone?
Yes, if you were to superimpose the zoning map over the Figure 4 and what's depicting the 100-year floodplain, you know, all of that southern portion below that green line would be within the, you know, previous 100-year floodplain. And there are portions of it that, like I said, on the western edge, that would be actually north of that zoning delineation line.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I've seen in my family's business, three huge floods where we've had over 20 feet of water in less than 100 years, three times. So my concern is just, you know, the residents who may be living in a possible flood zone that was previously done and maybe redone today because we don't have the water, but nobody can predict how much water we can have.
Right.
Because nobody predicted I would have 20 feet of water in my office one day. So my concern is just that, and I know that we're building in floodplains all the time. I just wanted for my own reference to see where that was, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. Other questions?
Just one question, Patrick. Good briefing, thank you. On page 10, the third bullet, if you could just maybe dumb down your comments a little bit for me, I didn't quite understand, this is maybe just a bit of a learning thing for me, but your comments about the PD coverage and we were violating that particular aspect in this proposal, could you further elaborate on that so I understand that a little better?
Sure. The planned development, you know, takes into account the allowed base coverage, and then it has these tiers or steps that are based on lot sizes. And so as you get into larger lots, the coverage actually goes down. And so that's, that's part of the issue with some of these particular sites is that particularly these lots that are just over the cusp, actually, in many cases, allow less coverage than the smaller lots. So the PD ordinance establishes maximum coverage by lot size, but also factors in the base allowable coverage. So the base zone district in this case, a single-family residential, would allow up to 40% coverage. The PD ordinance is less than that, but it provides this flexibility. And as I mentioned, other projects in the area like Morgan Ranch or Morgan Creek that are also planned developments in this community plan have similar 35, and I think in one case, up to 45% coverage. So this, the coverage allowance in the PD ordinance can be exceeded.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much. Mr. Herzog?
Thanks, Patrick. One, is someone going to reply to Mr. Brown?
I mean, I have colleagues here, and the applicant may want to, in fact, I think the applicant told me he just spoke to Mr. Brown this morning. So again, a lot of project history that predates me. I think there's probably some others here that will, you know, that can speak more to Mr. Brown's issue, and if you want to provide us any direction to, you know, on that aspect of it.
Okay, thanks. And then another, another question is, you mentioned those other Morgan areas, would you consider those to be a community of interest?
Maybe I need to understand the question, community of interest?
Become more familiar with communities of interest, and...
Is this a redistricting?
It's not, it's not. Trying to consider, you know, communities of interest a little more, and would you say those other Morgan areas that you mentioned are consistent with, are those all a community of interest, or would we consider that even larger than that?
I guess based on...
I can jump in. I would say that's a fair statement, that whole Dry Creek West Placer area outside of the big, specific plans, Riola Vineyards and Placer Vineyards. There's a lot of subdivisions that have been approved in that Dry Creek West Placer area in this immediate area. So, yeah, I would say they're all of a community interest, so to say.
Okay, thanks.
And then I'd like to follow up on the Brown letter. Just when you said that you didn't find anything, so you went back and looked at prior decisions of the county, and you didn't find any record or documentation of those requirements?
Again, Alex, if you want to speak to it, I mean, this is not a new issue. We just don't find where any of that was documented or memorialized. And again, given so much of the project history, we aren't able to validate, as I said, but that's, you know, by no means do I mean to suggest he's not accurately portraying it. We just don't have a record of it.
The county doesn't have a record of it, okay. Any other questions of the commission? If not, this...
One more, I'm sorry, it just came to me. In this flood zone map, as I am concerned about, because I've had to deal with it, if their houses do get flooded and we allowed this building to go on a new flood zone map instead of an old one, is the county liable for anything like that, for these people to come back to the county and say, you let these guys build a house here and I built here, and I can't get flood insurance, or I can't get flood insurance? And now these people are stuck in a home that has three feet of water in it?
I'll start the answer, and then I'll probably look at Clayton. You know, again, all of, there is no building within the flood zone.
Okay.
And, and, you know, 60% of this 24 and a half acre lot is dedicated to a common area lot to protect the flooding and wildlife interests in that, you know, in that area. As far as liability and...
Yeah, so I guess for liability, it becomes a bit of a trickier issue in that it wouldn't prevent anybody from filing a claim, but as long as the county, assuming it was within the floodplain, assuming the county properly conditioned the project, then the county would have defenses. In this instance, it's not within the floodplain, so the county would have the defense of the fact that it's not within the floodplain, and therefore, there's no reason to expect that it would flood.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alex Fish, I previously worked on this project and do have some of the history and can just provide a little bit of clarity on the couple of issues that have come up. No portion of the developed project area is located, as Clayton said, within the floodplain. And beyond that, each of the homes, their building pads have to be a minimum of two feet above the 100-year floodplain elevation, and the finished floor elevation has to be at least three feet above that finished floor elevation. Secondarily, if Chair Haughey, if you wanted an explanation at all on the issue that Mr. Brown raised, I'll just briefly point out, so this is the previous alignment of the subdivision roadway under the 11-lot project, which has since been modified under the approved 19-lot project. And this, what is now an EVA, was under the 11-lot project, part of the subdivision roadway that would have served these lots in this area, ended in a cul-de-sac here, and there's an EVA connection under the original approved project. And there were some agreements in place, written agreements. The term of those agreements had gone on longer than the initial period of the approval, but the parties had mutually agreed at some point to continue to honor them. But when we were initially processing the 19-lot subdivision modification, which was also relying on the same roadway alignment, Mr. Brown ultimately elected to cancel his participation in the agreement, and the developer at that point modified their project to this alignment, the reason being there is an access easement that already exists that's up here that serves these lots and to the west here. And part of the agreement to, was to, for Mr. Brown to relinquish his rights to this easement in favor of access to the new roadway vis a vis the EVA connection. And so, moving forward, that's the, the understanding was, once that agreement was canceled, the developer had to go back to the drawing board and realign the project roadway to then incorporate this access lot, this, you know, 50-foot access easement, so that the project would work.
All right, thank you, Alex.
So, the pointer was moving, oh, excuse me. The pointer was moving back and forth pretty quickly.
My apologies.
So, so as it exists right now, where is the EVA access?
The EVA continues to be this location, that's why this is here, this is the dedicated EVA. There was a dedication of an allowance for that EVA connection from the adjoining ownership, which is the Morgan Creek Golf Course. Mr. Brown's property is actually further to the west, not a direct adjoining, it's about 200 yards away approximately. And he also has access through the Morgan Creek property, and he has a couple different points of ingress to his property.
So basically, even though he canceled the agreement, it still went through, is what we're saying?
Because the project owner developer also has rights of use of this area, so they can... can develop roadway improvements within the roadway easement, right, that are ultimately um, available for, still continuing, actually. Mr. Brown can access this area and drive across it and continue on in an easterly/westerly fashion over this easement out to Cook Riola Road. The applicants here, my understanding is that, uh, the project developer has also elected to grant him full access to the onsite subdivision road all the way out to Cook Riola, whereas, under just the background condition, uh, his rights would only be to this area.
So that upper area, that is a road up there?
That is a road.
So where was the fence supposed to go?
So there's no, um, there's no fencing per se that is conditioned to this project along the westerly boundary, other than a restrictive access, right, a gate for the EVA. And, uh, secondarily, I believe, uh, there's an agreement, I think there's at least some agreement, that this will be a pipe bollard style gate up here at this point.
Thank you, Alex. Other questions of the commission? All right. At this time, we'll open it up to the applicant to come in and make comments.
Hi there. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Chris Dickinson. I'm with Town Development. And first, I'd like to take a moment just to thank the commission members for your time and your consideration of our requests for additional coverage here today. Additionally, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Severson on your 40-plus years of service. That's a, that's a great honor. Um, also, I'd like to thank staff for their time and effort on not only this, but, uh, Wyden Creek is our fifth project in the unincorporated Placer County area. Um, and and so they're always great partners to work with. Um, Patrick did a great job of explaining the issues and the merits here, and so I'm not going to, um, repeat him, uh, repeat what he said. But, um, just wanted to offer a few additional points in that really the main reason we're asking for this additional coverage here is is twofold. It's market preference and then neighbor sentiment. Um, this additional coverage will allow us to offer all single-story homes. And in addition to the single-story home, we'll be able to offer structural options. So it'll allow us to offer a California room or Lojo, which is extremely popular with our buyers right now. And then it'll allow us to offer additional garage space as well. So, you know, being able to offer these options is very important, um, to make Wyden Creek a successful project and to be able to produce a product that's commensurate with these lots. They're, they are, um, construction's almost complete out there. If you've been by it, they're they're fantastic lots. So we're trying to match the product with with the lots that are out there. Um, and at the end of the day, I think this modest increase will make for a better project long-term, um, for the community. And so, um, with that, I'd like to thank you for your time. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And we also have our engineer Curtis King for any of the more technical questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? I don't see any, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, so do we have, yes, we do have somebody on Zoom, so.
Mr. Brown, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
He said he was going to be Zoom challenged.
Okay. Looks like you're on, Mr. Brown.
Hello. Sorry about that. I was having some technical difficulties.
Understood.
Um, thank you for your time, uh, commission members. I appreciate it. Uh, my name is George Brown. Um, I do have a long history with this development. I was on the MAC when it was approved as 11 lots. In fact, I was on the MAC for every one of their subdivisions as they came through the MAC. I, um, at the time when the MAC approved this lot, I, as may you you have it in the past yourselves, found myself in the position of having to, uh, determine data for the lot itself, the development itself, and then after approving it, reach out to the developers for my own personal concerns because I didn't want to have a conflict of interest. So I wasn't able to do it on MAC and in county, um, uh, time. So that's the difficulty in recording. Also, because it started in 2005, that created further documentation problems because emails, I don't know how many of you have emails from 2005, but I don't have them. So there's there's, that's part of the documentation. That's what, uh, they were talking about validation. So the situation that I see is is, and where my concern is, in 1992, when we approved the Dry Creek Community Plan, we understood the development was going to be coming in the area. And there there were mostly small ranchettes, you know, two to five-acre ranchettes. And we were concerned about our privacy and our ability to maintain our lifestyles. So what we what we worked through on on every project with the MAC was to make sure we had screening and offered buffering and fencing, so that when development came in, those people that came in didn't have access to other people's property. And as approved on this, it it does not in any way contain those people that live in those homes from accessing not only my property, but the driving range at Morgan Creek. I've spoken with Charlie Gibson. He's the owner of, uh, Morgan Creek Country Club. Um, and we're in agreement that there needs to be a way to stop people from getting to the edge of the boundary of the western boundary from coming onto his property and my property. We've had trouble there, uh, in the past on that property over the years. Um, that was the high school party place where people would come to camp and have their bonfires. And it was, and in summer, it was a constant. My expectation is, once they get access to that roadway, they'll have nothing to stop them from driving right through the end of that cul-de-sac and onto, um, Morgan Creek property and access my property. Further, early on, when Wes Zicker and I were talking about this project, he was the one that, um, convinced me to to work with them for the EVA to allow an, uh, an emergency egress in the event there is a flood through my easement. And I agreed to that with a stipulation that I have access to that road and access to a paved road. When this, when I, when I found out in 2017 that that had not been put into, uh, the approval documents, I wrote a letter to the board, but unfortunately, the letter did not get to you in time. So part of what I'm doing here today is addressing my concerns, but also putting this on to, um, onto the docket so that it's now a part of the public record. There are several property owners around the property that, um, and I've talked to Chris Dickinson about this a little bit today. Um, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to resolve this, um, between the parties. But it is very important to the community that we are able to retain our lifestyles while allowing for the development within the within the community.
Your three minutes is up, if you could close your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other commenters? In that case, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'd like to hear the applicant, if he wants to respond to that.
All right. Uh, the applicant, would you like to respond?
Yeah. Um, so Mr. Brown brought up a few, a few, so there is, I guess, where do you want to start with this? You know, there's a long history between, uh, Homes By Town and and Mr. Brown. Um, at one point, there was a recorded agreement. Uh, Mr. Grant, Mr. Brown, um, terminated that agreement, which caused us to reconfigure the the project as described earlier. Um, you know, we've made an effort to work with all the neighbors out there. Um, and and I spoke with Mr. Brown again today, that I'm willing to work with him on where he's talking about that. And cul-de-sac, um, kind of, uh, making sure that there is no access at that location. Um, but, you know, I think in terms of what we're requesting today, it's not specifically germane to the coverage, but I, you know, we are willing to work with Mr. Brown here over the next few weeks while we're installing the fencing improvements.
All right. Thank you.
James, do you have a question for the applicant? Okay. Yeah, on the map, here's a, here's EVA Road. Is it, is that gated?
There's a, um, like a utility easement style, style gate.
Is it not a gate?
It's a gate, but it's it's a, um, you know, what you would see, I guess, kind of like at a at a trailhead. It's like just a, it's for, because there's utilities running through there as well. So it's not a full fence, but it is, it is gated, so there won't be car access.
Okay, and that's lower road there?
Correct.
That's paved and in place?
That's not paved. That's, that's a gravel. That stretch is gravel. Um, and it will be gravel, um, in perpetuity.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
I have a question. You mentioned, or Mr. Brown mentioned that he has access to that cul-de-sac. Is there a road that, is there going to be open space there for somebody to drive in and out? Or is there going to be a gate there that you're saying only that he has?
There's a, there's a, so, is this, um, okay. So along this top section here, and it goes all the way out to Cook Riola Road, um, this is an easement area which Mr. Brown is a party to, um, the golf course is a party to, and then this is the court rights here, and then Mr. Kennedy owns these two parcels. So they're all, and we were at one point a party to this easement as well. Uh, we have a sense, we we've quit claim that because we didn't want all our future residents having access through through their properties to Cook Riola Road. Um, and so what's going to be between this area of the cul-de-sac and then this property line is, um, a compacted road base to about this location here. And then there's a, there is a gate back here. I think what Mr. Brown and I spoke about this morning was moving, um, moving, moving, or adding a gate from this location here up to the fence that we're installing along the north. So there's not like this, you know, kind of dead space where there's no lives and people to congregate.
Same with going into Lot C on the eastern section of that, up in that other corner? Would there be another gate there so people can't go down that easement along where it says Lot C?
Right, right here?
No, up the top.
Oh, there's a, there's a gate back here. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Adding one right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're willing to work with with Mr. Brown on that, but there are other parties to that easement. So, I mean, this is, and and there's a utility easement as well. So we'll have to work with all parties. I mean, I can't say we're going to go ahead and do it, but it's something that we're willing to work through.
Okay. I was just wondering, because now all these people, if there's no way to stop them, then it's easy for them to drive through, which could cause problems for people in parcel A, B, and C.
There's a, there's, there's a gate here, and then they won't have, you know, these residents here won't have legal access through through there. And it's going to be, it's it's locked and.
Legal access doesn't mean much for people driving a car.
Yeah, I agree.
We know that, unfortunately. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Chair, if I could just add a comment to this as well?
Yes.
The item before your commission is the increase to that site lot coverage. And so part of your evaluation today is, um, and the consideration of whether you're going to impose conditions is based on that increase in coverage. Anything that was part of this original project approval back in May of 2017 is somewhat out of your purview today. But if there is a condition that you're interested in that relates to that increase in coverage, that is something you could certainly evaluate. But, uh, some of these things, including emergency vehicle access, may have already been, or would have been considered as in the original project approvals in May of 2017. And if they're not being changed or the impact is not being changed based on the action taken today, then you couldn't impose conditions on it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's bring it back to the commission for discussion then.
Yeah, it was, that was just for me to catch up. I didn't, you know, because I wasn't here before. I just was trying to catch up what was happening here. But, yeah, I know that that had, but thank you for that, Clayton. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, a motion?
I'm glad to do it.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so I move that, uh, let's see, this is a, this is our action. So I move that we find that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration errata to mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report program attachment fee is adequate to satisfy the requirements of SEQA and determine that the changes to lot coverage associated with the cup modification do not warrant additional environmental analysis.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Dematte. So vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. At this time, we're moving on to the second timed item, the Chance and Dean Rezone, continued from June 24th, 2021. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Amy Rosig, uh, associate planner, will be presenting this item. Good morning.
Good morning. All right. So, good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Amy Rosig with the Placer County Planning Services Division. As you mentioned, the project before you this morning is the Chance and Dean Rezone Request. This is a request to rezone a property, that's currently zoned temper production zoning district, to farm with a combining minimum building site of 2.3 acres or 100,000 square feet. Just to give you a way of the land as to where we are in the county, we're in the unincorporated Colfax area. We're just located south of Rollins Lake. Nevada County is just 300 feet to the west of this project site. This project is 30.88 acres in size. Um, access to the project site is provided from Old Bridge Road, which connects to Highway 174, which continues north into Nevada County. The project site, this is an aerial of it. It looks, it's currently developed with a residence and a garage, which were built around 2004, 2005, and those were built under permit. Um, there, and that's in the northeast corner of the project site. To the northwest corner, there's an agricultural building. This building's about 1,600 square feet in size. It was built by the current property owners. Um, but prior to the construction of this building, there was a smaller agricultural building. It's about 600 square feet in size, and that was built with a permit. Um, but that building, unfortunately, burnt down, so the current property owners did rebuild that building and built it bigger. Um, there is no building permit for this current building. And the property owners also built a 420-square-foot, what was intended to be a cabin. Um, the current use was a storage, a storage building. Um, and this is located kind of in the middle of the parcel.
Going back, the the farm building, does it require a building permit because it is an agricultural building?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It does? Okay.
Yeah, maybe you could explain that a little bit more, because, uh, we come up with it every once in a while. And, uh, there is a form of agricultural building that doesn't require a building permit, burning permit.
So it's a minor kind of sort of building permit. You still, there's an, there's a record that this building does exist, and then an inspector does come out and verify the use of it and setbacks. Um, but unless it has any power or plumbing to it, it's usually a pretty quick building permit process.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes we've heard where the ag commissioner's saying, you don't need a
Right.
building permit. But then we find out, well, usually it's a zoning problem that comes up, but.
Right. Yeah. And we.
Is there?
We had a project similar to that earlier this year that ended up going to the board of supervisors. And I know because of that project, we have tried to update our forms and, um, our website to clarify that the agricultural commissioner could sign off on a building permit for ag buildings, but there is still a building permit process. It's just a very modified, shortened version.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And then also, since we're back on this slide, I did want to mention the 420-square-foot building, um, was constructed without building We had a project similar to that earlier this year that ended up going to the Board of Supervisors, and I know because of that project, we have tried to update our forms and our website to clarify that the agricultural commissioner could sign off on a building permit for ag buildings, but there is still a building permit process. It's just a very modified shortened version.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then also, since we're back on this slide, I did want to mention the 420 square foot building was constructed without building permits, so part of this process would be to pull permits for the cabin, or the 420 square foot residential building, and the 1,600 square foot agricultural building.
So that residential building has plumbing and a kitchen?
It was intended to be that, and we could probably speak to that later, but the intent would probably be to permit it as storage, because it is quite a detailed building permit process.
All right, thank you.
So the project site is currently zoned timber production zoning district. This is a map of the current zoning with surrounding parcels. And as you can tell by just looking at this, this is kind of its own island, as we call it, of timber production zoning. It's surrounded by other parcels that are zoned with the base zoning district of farm, and surrounding parcels are zoned with a minimum building size of 43,000 square feet, which is just under an acre, to 100,000 square feet, which is 2.3 acres. There is a big, there is a large difference in uses between the TPZ and the farm zoning district. In the TPZ zoning district, you're only permitted for the growing and harvesting of timber. If you want a residential use, like what is on the property, you have to demonstrate that there is some sort of caretaker's unit and a reason why that residence would support the ongoing agricultural operation. Whereas in the farm zoning district, it's intended for commercial agricultural operations, but somebody could also live on the property and have a residence as a primary use.
Another question here. Oftentimes, we come across agricultural zoning and residential agriculture, and there's also a forest agriculture.
A residential forest?
Well, the residential forest as well as a forest.
Forest, yes.
Right. But at any rate, I guess I'm kind of wondering, where did the farm zone come from? What is that?
The farm zoning district in this area, or why the farm zoning district kind of exists?
Well, I guess why is this a farm zoning district, but is that like agricultural zoning, or what is farm zoning?
Yeah, so farm is one of our agricultural zoning districts. It's intended primarily for commercial agricultural operations. Generally, we'll see farm zoning districts with maybe a combining minimum acreage of 80 acres. These are usually like our larger farms in the area. In this particular area, they're smaller kind of mom and pop farms that could be permitted.
Is there a little history on why this is kind of standing by itself? 30 acres doesn't seem like enough land, and I'll go to you, Rich, for timber harvesting. It just seems really small.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think she's got to get into that, but at any rate, I just wanted to, it seems like if this is a forested area, why, why are we dealing with farm zones? I mean, what, what, yeah, this kind of came out of someplace that really doesn't jump right out at you.
Well, there, it looks like they're wanting to rezone this, correct, from timber to agriculture, so would be residential agriculture, so they could build a home on there and live there, or is just agricultural for, they want to take the timber out and go grow, I don't know, mandarins?
So, I mean, I guess you could technically in the farm zoning district, grow mandarins if you wanted to, but this probably isn't, in this part of the county, not a fitting.
Right, it's not just being hypothetical here, because they want to change it from, you know, that to a farm combining minimum of acreage. So is that the intent of the owner to rezone this, is to take it from timber so they can grow other crops on a farm zone?
They're just wanting to live on the property and...
So there's no zoning for you could build a house on a timber production zone?
Correct. Yeah, in the timber production zoning district, you can't technically just live on the property. There has to be some sort of ongoing timber production.
So that's why the house is built with no permit?
Can you have a, sorry to interrupt, but we've had caretaker properties, you know, built on, in this zone, and so that's different. Is that, am I right?
Correct, yes, yeah. I can kind of get into like the history of how we got to this point.
Okay, well, I want to go back, because I'm sure not clear on...
Why this is farming?
Why this area has got all a farm zone when it's all timberland.
So historically, all these parcels in this area is, you know, like, like Amy said, they're farm zone, smaller parcels, one acre minimum zoning, 2.3 acre zoning. So this zoning has been in place for years and years. So how that originated, I don't have an answer for that, because it goes back. So, so far, this isn't anything recent that's happened, but you know, that's zoning in place. The TPZ, the smaller TPZ parcels, and, you know, if I'm not mistaken, Alex could correct me, but I think a lot of these, at one time, I think they were PG&E parcels, or another utility. Are you going to mention that? Maybe we should let Amy finish her presentation.
Okay, so I guess I can refinish my question here, and normally, when, when somebody gets out of the TPZ, it will go to some form of forestry, either forestry residential or forestry, forest ag.
Correct. So I guess that's the whole purpose of this hearing, is to kind of discuss what the request is, and if that's an accurate zoning district, and make a recommendation to the board about the zoning.
How about she finishes her presentation?
Well, good. I just wanted to get clear on what farm zoning is, and maybe a little bit of why.
Yeah, so, I wish that I had an answer for you as to the history of this, why these areas and Colfax are zoned farm. I didn't, I don't have an answer for you right now.
It's probably an antiquated issue, yeah.
Yeah, it probably goes decades back into when these properties were first zoned.
Okay, I want you to continue with your presentation.
Okay. So this property does have a lot of history. In March of 1977, this property, along with 450 properties in the county, were rezoned to TPZ, the timber production zoning district. And I'll kind of go over how and why that happened in the next couple of slides. At that time, in the 1970s, the property was under the ownership of PG&E, which is a utility company. And then in the early 1990s, PG&E sold off this property to a private property owner. They had history of timber production, so they ended up harvesting the site and removing Ponderosa pine and Douglas fir from the site and selling the timber for profit. We know that this happened because there was a timber harvest plan that was prepared and approved by the California Department of Forestry. The site, this plan outlines the conditions of the site at that time, what the, what they were removing, and where on the project site they were removing it from, and addressing what would happen to the site after the timber was removed. Then in 1999, a new property owner took over the property, and they requested approval of a minor use permit for a caretaker's unit. They said they wanted the caretaker's unit to manage the timber operation, which would include brush clearing, selective logging, and planting of new trees. And in 1989, that request was approved by the zoning administrator, which is why there is a caretaker's unit. But it's a little bit more fun. So in the early 2000s, another property owner took over the property and started the expedition of constructing the caretaker's unit. During that process, they built the caretaker's unit over the property line, the adjacent neighbors, NID. NID did not appreciate the house being constructed over the property line, so they had to relocate the caretaker's unit. As part of that process to relocate the caretaker's unit, they did request a variance, and during that variance process, planning staff considered the eligibility of the caretaker's unit. At that time, there was no ongoing timber operation that was known of, and so staff considered whether a caretaker's unit should even be permitted on that site. But during that time, the caretaker's unit was allowed to remain, and it was, construction was completed, and the building permit was finalized. Then in September of 2012, the applicants and the current property owners, Aaron Dean and Derek Chance, they purchased the property. Under their ownership, there's been no timber operation, and they do not plan on having any timber operation in the future. So they are requesting to rezone their property to farm with a minimum building size of 2.3 acres or 100,000 square feet, to be consistent with their neighboring properties. To the north and west, these properties are zoned farm with a minimum building size of 100,000 square feet, which is a larger minimum parcel size in this area compared to the east and south, which has a 43,000 square foot minimum parcel size. So because of the TPZ zoning district, the process to rezone out of timber production into another zoning district, whatever that might be, the process is quite different than your normal rezoning process. In 1976, the state of California implemented the Forest Taxation Reform Act of 1976, and the purpose of this act was to preserve properties for the growing and harvesting of timber. So in 1977, county assessors across the state of California created a list of properties, which determined that the highest and best use of these properties would be for timber. So that is why this property, along with 450 other properties across the county, were all rezoned on March 1, 1977, to timber production. Today, the process is a little bit different to get into the timber production zoning district. If a property owner would like to be zoned to timber production, they have to have at least 160 acres. They have to demonstrate the timber quality site classification, which is usually on a scale of one to five, and they have to demonstrate that they have at least a five site class quality. They have to demonstrate that the parcel meets current timber stocking standards, and they have to prepare a forest management plan, which is prepared by a registered forester. And in the timber production zoning district, the uses are limited. As we kind of mentioned earlier, residential uses are not permitted. The primary use of the timber production zoning district is for the growing and harvesting of timber. In return, property owners receive a reduction on their taxes annually, and then when they go to harvest the timber, they would be taxed at that time. And parcels are restricted for a period of 10 years, and this renews itself annually until a property owner makes a request for a new zoning district, or, and to terminate the timber production zoning district. So that's kind of where we're at right now with this property. There are two ways to get out of the timber production zoning district. One is to submit a notice of nonrenewal and request a new zoning district, and once that's approved, 10 years from that date, the new zoning district would go into effect. Or somebody could request an immediate rezone. The Board of Supervisors makes a recommendation to the State Board of Forestry with the following findings. One would be that the conversion is within the public interest. The second is that the conversion does not have a substantial unmitigated adverse effect to any ongoing timber production in the area. The soil slope and watershed conditions would be suitable for the uses that are proposed, if approved, and that the existence of an alternative use cannot be considered. There has to be nearby suitable land, no nearby suitable land, I'm sorry, for the alternative use to be located on. And an economic character of the existing use cannot be seen as a reason for immediate rezone. The economic character can only be considered if there's no reasonable or comparable timber or growing use where the land may be put. The property owners have requested an immediate rezone instead of the 10-year rollout, and our staff, we analyzed this request further. First, we looked at the community plan consistency. The site is designated as special study corridor in the Colfax community plan. The purpose of this is to allow for careful attention to protect the natural scenic and recreational resources, and to encourage limited development. While the project will change the zoning and allowable uses, the project does not include the development activities such as a minor land revision, or additional construction beyond anything that's existing right now. Further, if the land development project was proposed, it'd be analyzed on its own merit, considered for consistency with the community plan. So as far as staff has reviewed it, this project would be consistent with the community plan. Next, we evaluated the project for its consistency with the zoning districts and land uses. The 30-acre site is surrounded by parcels that range in size from 1 to 10 acres. All surrounding parcels have a base zoning district of farm. Surrounding parcels to the south and east have a minimum parcel size of 43,000 square feet, and surrounding parcels to the north and west have a minimum parcel size of 100,000 square feet. Surrounding parcels are developed with single-family residences and not, do not include timber harvest uses. So the farm with a 2.3 acre minimum is, proposal is consistent with the surrounding uses in zoning districts. Next is the timber harvest feasibility. We know that the site was harvested between 1994 and 1995. The applicant hired a registered forester this past summer to evaluate what happened during the harvesting during the 90s, and to evaluate the conditions of the site right now. The name of that registered forester is Terry Rogers, who's been a forester since 1983. He visited the site and provided details regarding the current conditions of the site and its harvesting feasibility. He said that a great number of canyon live oak, California black oak, and major brush species have taken over the site, and there are now more oak and brush species prior to the harvest in the 1990s. He concluded that while timber could practically grow on the site, it is impossible, it would be practically impossible to harvest timber for several reasons. The site contains a water course that is steep with no flattening before it reaches the stream, and the steep slopes of the property would make it difficult to get equipment in and out. Second, the site, site class and parcel size. The site grade is on a scale of one to five, with that, with one being the most, the best and most productive use, and the site is on a grade of three, so it's kind of a moderate. The California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection's position is that as a parcel gets smaller in size, timber harvest becomes less viable, and the smaller the parcel gets, the more appropriate it is to have a higher production zone, or productive class. And then lastly is the immediate rezone. As far as that part of the application process, the applicants are requesting an immediate rezone. And we've analyzed the documentation that the applicants provided, which included the forester report, which was included as an attachment of your staff report, and determined that there are no, there's no evidence to support the request, as the request would not be within the public interest. Further, there is nearby land, which is already zoned farm, which will allow for residential use. So we are unable to make the findings for the immediate rezone, but we are in support of the 10-year rollout, and the conclusion of the 10 years, the property would be rezoned as is proposed to be farm. However, during those 10 years, should the property owner obtain new information, they could be considered for an immediate rezone if they provide more information to us. So we have had a couple of public meetings to engage. We've gone before the Agricultural Commission in April of this year. The Agricultural Commission had a very lively discussion, and they were in support of the rezone request because the site is not currently being used for timber production, and it has not been for some time. However, they did not believe that there are sufficient grounds to support an immediate rezone request. We also brought this project before the WEMAR Applegate Colfax Municipal Advisory Council in June of this year, and the MAC felt that the property is currently being used as residential, and any further development would require discretionary approval, so they were in support of the immediate rezone. But based on staff's analysis, we are recommending to the planning commission that you make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to adopt a negative declaration, and to adopt an ordinance to rezone the property to farm with a minimum building size of 2.3 acres, effective 10 years from the date of approval.
All right. Commission, questions?
So if this gets rezoned into ag, then they could split this up into approximately 13 other parcels and put 13 other houses on this 30-acre piece of property, correct?
Eventually, yes, yeah. But that would require a substantial amount of road improvements. Well, we have kind of reviewed initially our staff, because the property is so steep, getting adequate soils testing for septic systems and roadways would be, it's going to be quite difficult and expensive.
Okay.
But in theory, yes, it could be possible.
Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up to that, I didn't understand it that way, so that's interesting. So I thought that you had said, Amy, that during the discussion, that this could have a residence on it, a single residence on it, if it's rezoned.
Correct.
Okay.
For agricultural land, you can have one resident plus employee housing on your property if it's with over 10 acres? From what I understand, what I was told from Josh when I got my building permit for my ag building, I don't know if that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but if this changes to ag residential or whatever...
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. So they can build a house on it, but if they go into, and we allow the ag, then it could be developed into 2.3 acre parcels. So in theory, then, like she said, it can be developed into 13 parcels and 13 different houses. It could be subinvited.
But based on the staff recommendation, that would be 10 years from now?
Correct, yes.
Another question, would they be allowed ADUs and junior ADUs?
Under the farm zoning district, they would.
Not under TPZ?
Not under the TPZ, no.
Interesting, okay, all right.
As long as they're under 1,200 square feet.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, the whole ADU, you think.
Yeah, the state law is different. Yeah, the state law is different.
Okay. Other questions of the commission? Thank you, Amy. At this time, I'd like to open, uh, invite the applicant up, um, to discuss the project.
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you.
Thanks for giving us this time.
So you have a presentation to make, maybe explain why you're wanting to do this?
Um, well, one of the main things is we need to get our buildings permitted that we've constructed on the property. Um, second is, is, you know, we live there, um, and it's super restrictive. We're not able to harvest timber, um, you know, to earn any kind of a living to make up for the fact that we're super restricted. You know, we can't have the ADU, we cannot construct a swimming pool, et cetera.
Um, one of the main things, we have three children amongst both of us, and, um, our overall dream or plan for the property was to build, um, have a lot and a house built for each one of these kids. As you know, we're in a housing crisis in this state, and, you know, costs are going through the roof for housing. Um, we're worried that our kids won't even be able to live in this state under the crisis. And, um, one of the ideas we had was, you know, we could change this over the zone, and we could, you know, dial out four lots, give them three of them, and that kind of thing. So that's what our overall dream is. And as far as the property, you know, doing the math and saying you could have 13 lots in this whole area, that's kind of an unrealistic way of viewing it. Because with the seasonal creek in the hills at literally 30 and 40% grades, it's just not feasible to put that many houses in there. Um, and we had a developer walk in the land, he came up with an area where it's kind of flat. He said you could probably get four or five lots here. Um, and that's really all that he kind of would come up with as far as, you know, how many total lots we could possibly have on there.
Right. Do you have, uh, questions from the commissioners of the applicant?
Just, uh, real quick, no intention of farming or?
No.
No, farming's just, um, because it's consistent with the neighborhood, which is just more like a residential, um, that's, you know, allows regular residential uses.
Yeah, we were told it would be easier to, to adopt the rezone as our neighbors are, and that would help our whole cause.
Yeah, even Nevada Irrigation District is zoned farm residential.
And I think Mr. Johnson brought up the idea of, you know, that's a tiny piece of property to grow timber on, you know. Not only is it tiny, but with the creek running through it, that eliminates like 30% of the whole harvest area, you know. I mean, just getting lumber trucks back there on our little old bridge road would be impossible. You would have to literally build a new road just to get to the timber. And according, according to the forester, there's no money to be made. In fact, he said you'll spend $100,000 to get $20,000 or $30,000 worth of timber. So there's just.
And there's not really a lot left after the main, um, the first time they logged it extensively. And what's left, it's, you know, if you took that, there wouldn't be any timber left.
The only trees that are good-looking timber trees are all in the creek line. And that's why they're there is because they couldn't harvest them before.
Yeah, very soon.
Is this picture part of your property?
No.
I didn't think so. I didn't know, so I was just wondering.
That's our bridge, yeah.
You said a bridge, I'm like, wow, you got a pretty fancy bridge.
That'd be nice.
Did your forester recommend any, uh? Any? Yeah, sorry about that. No, I put my finger on the microphone, shut myself off. But did your forester recommend any management activities to, uh, maybe get your trees to grow better or less oak or less brush or that kind of stuff?
He made a comment that the soil content would allow for extremely slow recovery as far as the forest goes. And then he also brought up the idea of having an extensive planting program just to make it even possible.
Yeah, it would be a lot of work.
Well, I guess I'm thinking from the aspect of fire. And if he's talking about a lot of brush and other types of stuff, the oak tree is probably, you know, I mean, the larger oak trees, they're probably okay. But at any rate, I was just wondering if he recommended that you deal some with the brush so that fire-wise, your property, uh, is better.
Oh, we know that.
We've talked about that for years now. One of our biggest issues is getting enough people in there to make it fire-defensible space. We spent an entire summer doing it ourselves, and we got approximately one acre that we considered.
It's a big job, I understand.
And it's like one of those things where we would never be able to catch up at all ourselves, you know. And originally, building the cabin, we knew that we could build employee housing on there. And we were originally building the cabin to put a couple in there who could manage the forest, literally clear things, make it, make defensible space while they lived there. And we would trade them, you know, rent for, or paying them and that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And that was our original plan for building the cabin was to make it a little more fire-safe.
Okay. Is your forester here today?
He's not, no.
Okay. Well, I reviewed his report. I will admit that I'm a licensed forester also.
Oh, great. So does some of this make sense to you then?
Huh?
Does this, some of this make sense to you since you're a forester?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Good.
Okay.
I do know that he did make the comment that he thinks that these small properties being kept in TPZ is actual, actually detrimental to the whole TPZ system. Like, they should be kicked out if they're not producing timber. You know, it's just plugging up resources. It shouldn't be in TPZ at all.
Here, another thing you might consider, when you look at the map, and we are an island amongst all these smaller lots. Our 30 acres is probably the most important area in that whole area for wildlife. There's no spots for wildlife to go. In fact, they must go from all those little lots, they must come to ours because there's areas in our 30 acres, we haven't even set foot yet. That's how steep it is in, on, you know. Um, so as far as the wildlife in the area, that's probably a sanctuary for them.
Right. Yeah, 40% is getting pretty steep.
What's that?
40% slopes are getting pretty steep.
They are, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, I have enough.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? All right. Uh, then at this point in time, let's open up the public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? And anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we will close the public hearing and bring the item back to the commission for discussion. Oh, any questions of the staff?
Oh, I'd like to do something.
Okay.
Okay, well, you know, I want, uh, want to congratulate Amy for the thorough research you did on TPZ. We've had this issue come up before us before, and sometimes it was a little fuzzy what, uh, we're really dealing with here. But when I read through the report, I really appreciated the fact that you had done the thorough research that you did to, uh, explain to us what TPZ is all about. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I agree with that too. She's done a wonderful job.
All right. Any, uh, discussion on the part of the commission?
So if, if this is effective 10 years from today's date, if it's approved and everything, so 10 years from now, they could split their property for their kids to live there? Not next week or the year after, right? Is that correct?
So, yeah, so 10 years, you know, this does have to go to the board. Your commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the board. If the board so chooses to approve this, uh, you know, 10-year rollout, it would become effective from that date. If they did intend to split this property, uh, you know, they would have to submit for a, uh, you know, tentative map, a tentative map to split property that would, again, come before your commission, uh, but that is a possibility.
So that could come within, they could do that within the 10-year period?
So there, the provision is, and Clayton can help me, but I think it, within a year, is it a year or two years of that rollout, they can submit a map application if I'm not mistaken? Clayton will correct.
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I, I don't know this section right off. But yeah, I believe they can submit it at the end of that portion. But it's not effective until, obviously, till the property is rezoned.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to maybe make a comment in that, uh, I want to say that I agree with the, uh, staff recommendation on the 10-year rollout. And, uh, basically, uh, what we're up against, these immediate rollouts are very, very rare and really a pretty sensitive topic. The Board of Supervisors doesn't have the ultimate authority over that. It has to go to the Board of Forestry before they can be approved. And so there, I would say that there really has to be a really strong reason why you should have an immediate rollout. So I, I think the 10-year is a reasonable approach, and that's a normal approach that is given to people in the, in the act itself. I call it the Zeebert-Neddy Lee Act, but it's, uh, it's kind of hard to say that. But at any rate, that, that's a process that's laid out in the, in the act itself that, uh, as well as immediate rollout. But immediate rollouts are very, very rare.
Right.
And in this case, I think the forester did a good job of trying to justify it, but I don't think he quite made it totally. So that would be my opinion there. Also, I'm wondering if, uh, if the farm zone is an antiquated title, you know, why, or maybe could we use some of the more modern language like residential agriculture or agriculture in the future? Recognizing that probably at some point in time, the, uh, Colfax Area Plan is going to be updated, and, uh, farm zone really isn't explained very well, I don't think, in, in the zoning code.
Yeah, I would say, you know, long-term, you know, we, we hope to get our comprehensive general plan update underway. Uh, you know, a lot has changed in the county in the last 30 years. Uh, so, you know, these are definitely, definitely areas we would look at to see if the, uh, you know, the zoning that's in place today is, uh, still appropriated and applicable. So, uh, yeah, I'd, comment noted.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying is you're anticipating in the future, you'd be looking at the overall plan and making the changes in that plan.
Well, you bring up a good question. I, may I?
Yeah.
But, um, if this is 10 years from now, that this gets, you know, put into play, and within that period of time, we look at, at the area, and it's updated to more modern language, how does that affect this decision?
Oh, it probably doesn't. I was just thinking in my mind, why, why are we going with antiquated language?
No, I'm agreeing with you.
I think that's explained.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Um, in that if we, if we change this today to farm, and within 10 years, we update this area, um, to more modern language, then maybe our decision is outdated in 10 years.
It might be, but the county would go back and look at all of these designations and reevaluate them at that point in time as part of the implementation of a new zone code.
Okay, good. So that.
Right, and even if the county looked at it again, that would still be a rezone. So it would still need to go through the same 10-year process for TPZ rezone.
Okay, okay. Okay, good.
Okay. Uh, is, so with, if we go 10 years, that means they can't build the swimming pool right away because of the restrictions on the property?
Right. It basically means that for the next 10 years, it's still a TPZ zoned property and has to comply with those requirements. At the end of 10 years, then it becomes a farm zoned property and then is subject to the requirements for farm zoning. So yes, for the next 10 years, there's, they're still under the TPZ zone restrictions.
Okay.
And there is a rollout process that affects the taxation as you move through it.
That's right.
Taxation change. Um, being that you guys were extremely honest and you really want this property for you and your family and your kids, you know, I don't mean to be personal, but how, how soon do you want to plan to build homes for your kids? And I, I, I concur with you because, you know, my kids are teenagers. I don't think 10 years from now, when they're going to buy a house, they're going to be able to afford one. Um, and maybe, you know, they have to live in my house forever, I don't know, but God forbid. Um, but how, a personal question, I guess, if I, you know, don't want to step out of bounds and ask this question, is your plan within this 10-year period? Are you hoping that maybe your kids are younger and then after 10 years, it's okay to redevelop this?
If possible, it'd be sooner. We have a 30-year-old, a 28-year-old, and a teenager.
That's our biggest concern with, uh, immediate versus 10-year rollout is that, first of all, I'm 54 years old. I can, I can help build houses right now. In 10 years, it's going to be a bit different. And, you know, with the housing crisis and, you know, my kids will be renting for the next 10 years. It's just, it's just a financial stress.
But you're younger than me, so that's good.
Yeah, but what I would say though is the, uh, you know, how old your kids are going to be in 10 years or you is not really one of the criteria that the state will look at when they approve this.
No, I agree it's not, and I just, you know, he was personal and said, hey, look, I'm doing this for my kids, and I admire that. Yeah, a little bit, you know, I have a heart somewhere.
I will have to say, though, I don't agree with the personal interest part is what we have to prove now for the immediate rollout. It's like I read our reports and I read, you know, what Amy has written. And everything I read, I'm like, well, that's a perfect case for an immediate rollout. Like, it's stating here in clear detail why this property should not be in TPZ. Like, why, like, prolong our pain and misery 10 years when, you know, the county and the Board of Supervisors, et cetera, can pass this decision on to the, the Board of Forestry and let them make the final say.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, taking in consideration the surrounding areas, there are one-acre, two-acre lots around their property, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, it kind of makes sense to me.
And like I was saying, even Nevada Irrigation District that borders us on one side, they're even zoned farm residential.
Right, and I think that's because they have easement for their water lines. But that's another story.
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate that, oh, that, uh, you know, there were some problems that came up with regards to buildings and the permits. And, uh, in these cases, you know, those are really not reasons to, uh, do an immediate rollout. You know, there's specific reasons are spelled out in the act itself. And so at any rate, uh, it could potentially set up precedents in this county that probably would be not very good for, uh, the future parcels that we're dealing with.
If there's other parcels that are similar in size that don't meet the criteria in any way for TPZ, I mean, there's a lot of different criteria that we don't meet any of it, no standard for TPZ, then those properties should be rezoned to residential so that people can live their lives fully on the properties that they own.
I mean, if they checked off as many boxes as we did, then they should be rezoned as well. In fact, it's in your best interest to rezone those.
It's in everyone's best interest.
Yeah, I guess I'm not seeing it that way.
Yeah, I, as part of our discussion, I, you know, I, I rely heavily on your expertise, Richard, and I appreciate it. Um, I, I have a question because it was made, a comment was made that, you know, these smaller parcels, TPZs, you know, being rezoned, or if they're left, they do harm to TPZ, like large, is that true?
What's that now?
If, if we have smaller TPZ parcels that are left intact, like we leave them there and they're not producing timber and they're not actively, does that do harm to the greater TPZ zoned areas or forestry? Does that, does that do harm to that area?
Well, if, um, if we have problems with structures on property that, that are, you know, that's not a TPZ problem, that's a separate problem.
Okay.
And if, if we are rezoning those parcels to solve those problems, then that would be incorrect.
Okay.
And, uh, basically, the act itself intended for most parcels to go on through a 10-year rollout. It's really the same thing that happens with the Williamson Act. But, uh, in this case, it's a zone instead of a contract like the Williamson Act would be. So that would be the normal process that should be followed. And it would be a very, very big exception if all of a sudden we start rezoning properties and sending them up to the Board of Forestry when they could be going through a 10-year rollout.
Okay. That's, I, I think, you know, as part of our discussion today, we might want to direct staff just to help us understand, how many more properties are there like this in Placer County? You know, how many smaller properties that aren't actively harvesting timber that might be zoned in this way exist? Um, I'd be curious to know that and, and just be aware of that.
I, didn't, didn't you say 450, Amy? That in the 70s were rezoned, there were these smaller parcels that were owned and that just, they pushed them on in? Right. Oh, okay. Because it almost seems like, yeah, there's a lot of these smaller properties that are not producing, they're just dead space. And you're giving a discount in taxes to all these small properties when they could be rezoned, taxed at like the actual rate. I mean, we don't, we really save like maybe $400 a year, it's, it's so minor. But what I'm saying is it's, it's not helpful to have all these small properties in, in any form if they're not producing timber.
Well, if, the, the one factor that you're up against, if, if the potential there is to grow timber, that's what the act really was intended to provide for.
Right.
And so, you know, if the potential is there to manage the parcel, then that would be a really important factor. Now, if the property owner isn't actively managing it, you know, that's property owner's choice, but if it's capable of producing some timber, that would be what the Forestry Act is looking at.
Right.
In the 10-year rollout.
Right. Like, but in our case, we don't have much timber to harvest, and it's not available to harvest. So, there's like, you know, obviously different reasons why.
There is, your, your forester did say that it's Site 3?
There's a couple spots where there's timber, yes.
Well, you said there's, it's, well, he generally called it Site 3. There's some high site, some really low site. That's pretty common when you're talking about land areas.
But then he was also saying how.
Site 3, there's nothing wrong with Site 3. That's, that's a good timber production site. I know that from my experience. And so, you know, if, if you manage it, you could probably get some timber on it. And that's what, that's what the, even though you have a small parcel, and I understand that, that it's probably suitable and within your goals to roll it out. But basically, the normal process is to take 10 years to do that.
Right.
That was not the conclusion he came up with. He may have said a number 3, which is probably grossly under.
In a couple spots.
Because you just said, number 3 means there's, there's timber to be harvested.
No, it, it could be. Could be grown. Could be managed.
And he said, just the opposite for us. He says, there's nothing here. There's no timber here, because the only harvestable timber falls in the seasonal creek line.
Right. And it was long, it was long previously.
And it's inaccessible. Right, right, exactly. And that's why those good trees are there, because you can't be taken on any risk.
And so, as a forester, you go back at the previous operation, and what did they do here, folks? But at any rate, you have the capability to manage it. And like I say, you know, I mean, that brush field that you got to go out there, that, that's going to potentially be a problem for you for a long time. And so, you know, getting some trees growing back on the site would be a good thing. But it's difficult to understand.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's why we're looking at a rollout. Okay.
If I could just paint a picture real quick for everyone. If you could imagine us standing here with our 30-acre parcel, trying to get it from farm to TPZ, we would, we wouldn't even make it this far. I mean, we would be talking to Amy on her first time, and she would just say, no, there's, absolutely not. Your parcel does not qualify for TPZ.
Right.
So to me, when you look at it, and you say, well, I mean, there's a reason why you came up with 160 acres, probably because it means that those larger parcels are big enough to produce timber.
That's for, that's for parcels that wish to be coming into TPZ.
Correct, correct.
And they require a management plan. And so, that would be, if somebody has a larger parcel and would like it to be TPZ, that gives them the option and a way to do it. The county, I guess, or the state has come up with 160 acres. But basically, what happened back, as Amy described, back when this parcel was identified, it probably belonged to PG&E. And the county took a look, and every parcel that had a forestry potential on it was, and I think they were in the Williamson Act at the time, and if they had a forester potential, then the county zoned them as TPZ. So that's how your parcel got there. So, I agree, it's small, but...
And in 1977, before it was harvested, it probably had a lot of potential, like you're talking about, you know?
Right.
Once it was harvested, for the recovery to be so slow, now there's no potential.
Well, there's potential because soil exists, and the soil produces the trees.
Uh-huh. Right, right. But very low potential.
Yeah. So we're having a discussion here, but at any rate, I've expressed my opinion.
I had asked them for some, just for some reference, but going back to our discussion, and I'll direct this to Rich. Is there limits to what can be cleaned out in a TPZ compared to an ag zone? Because if it's an ag zone, you could probably clear out some of that brush a lot quicker, so there's not a fire hazard there. Is there restrictions on a TPZ zone that they can't go in and go clean out the base and skirt their trees, and they have to go through a process to make that a non-fire hazardous?
No, in TPZ, the intent would be that it is managed that way.
There's no, there's no special permits they have to go get, or an ag, they can just go clear the land because it's agriculture and we can do that?
Probably for the clearing part, but for, if they want to harvest timber, they have to have a timber harvest plan.
Correct. But I'm not asking about harvesting timber. I'm asking about the safety of the...
So, I mean, we do have a hazardous vegetation ordinance that allows a certain amount of clearing, and I'm not sure how that interacts with the, the TPZ, how that, what that interface is. Is that, that's something we would have to look into? You know, but like our, our woodland or oak re-ordinance, you know, obviously the TPZ would trump that.
Yeah.
So if it was taken out of TPZ immediately and put into ag, considering the fire problems that we have in California, would it give the landowner quicker access to, or easier access to go clear that fire problem?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that.
I would doubt it. You know, probably, what I'd recommend to them is that they go back to their forester and have them, have the forester give you some ideas on how you might manage the parcel, so that you do make, make it more usable for trees and for you, and safe, safe for you. So, there's some ideas there, but basically...
He did make some comments about having a, an extensive planting program and that kind of thing. But the comments that he made didn't bring it up to, oh, you'll be able to harvest timber someday. It never made it to that extent, you know what I mean?
Well, all I'm saying is, a forester can take a look at your parcel and give you some suggestions on how you might effectively manage it.
Sure.
Okay.
Could I ask, Amy, what are the criteria that this project doesn't meet in order that we're recommending a 10-year rollout versus immediate? Because as a planner, taking a look at a TPZ and all of that, it just seems inappropriate from a zoning land use standpoint, from the maintenance standpoint, you know, and being able to do things. So, you know, and from a 30-acre site viable, I just don't think that's a viable site for timber harvesting at this point in time. And how do you maintain it if you don't have a viable timber site? So those are kind of just from the planning standpoint, not the forest standpoint?
Right.
Right, and that's something that the Weimar, Applegate, COFAX MAC deliberated on a little bit, is from a practical standpoint, it doesn't make sense to keep this in for 10 years. But the state does outline findings that the Board of Supervisors, and then ultimately the State Board of Forestry has to make. And the first one being that there is, within the public interest, and that's the one that we really struggled on, is what would be the public interest if this property is rezoned out of, immediately of TPZ?
Amy, I'm going to follow up with Andrew, because honestly, that is the identical question I had. And frankly, it was generated from this discussion. And while I know we're, and I also defer to Rich, I mean, certainly has a great deal of experience in this, I have none. But, but this led me to ask that question about where, does the act define what public interest is? Who is it that made this decision in staff, and, and why?
So, I'd like to touch on just a couple of those things that somewhat related to that as well. That, I don't, there may be a further definition of public interest, which I can certainly look into. I don't know offhand.
Like immunity of interest?
But the seconds, the slide right after this is, are also factors that need to be considered for an immediate rezone. And these are probably two of the ones that have the bigger impact. And that is, the, the first bullet point is basically, there's no proximers and suitable land, which is not zoned as timberland production for the alternate use not permitted. So basically, there can't be any neighboring property that can be used for what they're proposing the use is and why they're getting out of the rezone. And in this situation, there is a lot of neighboring farm-designated land where they can do their same uses. And then the one after that, there is no other reasonable or comparable timber growing use to which the land may be put. So you have to, for an immediate rezone, you have to say basically that there's no reasonable possibility of timber harvesting on the property. So, those are two findings, and that's why there is usually a heightened bar for immediate rezone, because you have to show those findings as well. So, it is in the public interest, and the foresters' report does talk about the reasons why the forester believes it's in the public interest. But you have to meet all of those factors as well.
Okay, and then to touch on that, is it 10 or immediate, or is there some?
So if you do the 10-year rezone, you don't have to meet these requirements. This is for the immediate rezone.
Right, and is there some lesser year? Is it 10 or immediate?
That's the way it's set in the statute, is 10 years. There's no, there's no five-year plan or...
There's no five-year, four-year, no option, no five-year option.
I don't know, just honestly, when you, you see these small TPZs, and I understand, you know, PG&E probably said back in the 70s, don't zone us higher because we don't want to pay the taxes on all this land. So I can just hear that conversation way back when, and therefore, here you are. But it...
Let me, let me address that.
Okay.
Because back, back when this act was passed, in the state of California, the properties in the forested area, they had to pay taxes on their inventory every year. And so what it did is it caused property owners to mismanage their property and remove all the inventory. And the other factor that they're running up against is, like, with these, even on Site 1 property, you're talking about, you know, close to 100 years to get a merchantable tree.
Right.
And so, in order for forestry properties to compete with the other land uses, higher, higher uses, then all of a sudden, we start losing all our forestry property, and you lose all your timber production. And so at that time, the state came up with the Zeeberg-Nedgely Act, and it was really to protect and provide for the maintenance of forests for forestry purposes.
I understand, it just, it's such a small parcel, I don't see it as totally viable. So that, that bothers me, just from a, from a standpoint of having a business and making it viable. And then, the other thing that's really unfortunate, the state of California has pretty much killed the forestry industry from lumbering whatever. It's like, where do you, where do you market this stuff? You know, even if you had some timber. So, you know, things have changed a lot since 77. But, anyway, my thoughts.
It's not cost-effective whether they had 200 acres, let alone 30 acres. And obviously, in any kind of ag production, whether it's forestry or whatever, the smaller your parcel, the less economically productive financially it is.
Right.
So, again, why it takes 10 years, but I'm looking back at the timber zone background, and it's looked like it was just a deal for taxes, you know, probably for PG&E. So, it probably doesn't even correlate to what's going on in today's world and what's happened to the timber industry.
Well, it was for taxes, but...
According to the background, it's yield tax, so...
PG&E still has several thousand acres up there of TPZ that they're managing, yeah.
No, understand. And, and I, I can see why the state did it to, to preserve those, you know, forest lands. I do understand, but 30 acres in the middle of ag just doesn't make sense to me. But, understand, those are the findings that have to be made, and I don't know if we can make them. You said that, you know, if findings could be made in the future, they could come back and request this again, so it's not totally out. But I, I would say that making those findings is, is what's critical. Doesn't make a whole lot of common sense to me right now, but that's kind of where we are. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the part of the commission?
Hello?
In that case, I'd ask for a motion.
Okay, all eyes.
There it is. Okay, well, I would make the motion that we recommended the Board of Supervisors that we adopt a negative declaration for the chance of Dean rezoning project to set forth and attachment D and the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
We have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Sevison, so vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I further, I recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance to rezone excessive parcel number 099090004000 from TPZ Timber Production Zone to FB100 Farm, combining minimum building site of 100,000 square feet, effective 10 years from the approval date.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
We have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Woodward, so vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
And because this goes to the board, we don't have the appeals language at this time. You know, as, I think the commission did bring up, Amy, if we could hear how many of these small parcels, and I think the county should look at that comprehensively on where these parcels are, because this has come up in the past on some small parcels. And it'd really be good to take a more comprehensive view of the TPZ lands in Placer County, rather than a piece by piece, and take a look at the findings, and if we can make the findings countywide. So that would be appreciated.
Okay, one thing I would like to mention in relationship to that, and, and one thing I think that was really good about this, is the coordination with the Ag Commission. Because the Ag Commission really is a body that deals with this, at least initially, before it comes to us and the Board of Supervisors. So, I want to say that was a very good thing.
So a question of you, EJ, we have the voting of our potential for officers. Is that something you wanted to take up at this meeting, or is that something you want to take up?
So we, we provided that for reference.
Okay.
Typically, we do that at the first meeting of the year.
All right.
What you have in front of you is just the, the course of rotation over the last, I don't know if it's 10 years or so, just for reference. So that's what that is, something you guys can think about. So when we come back in January, we'll, you know, we'll elect the new officers.
Okay, that'll be on the agenda then. All right.
Great.
And I think before, adjourning the meeting, Larry, thank you for your years of service. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Thank, thank the county and all of you. I'll miss seeing you twice a month. At any rate, let's hope that the opportunity will come when we can see you again, and thank you personally, and then, and those that spoke, thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
I'll bring you the whiskey, Larry.